Good evening. This special meeting of the Socorro ISD Board of Trustees will come to order. The date is Monday, May 5th, 2025, and the time is 5:32 PM. We have a confirmed quorum. Thank you for joining us for this meeting, both in person and online via our YouTube stream. The full recording of the meeting will be available on YouTube and archived through the board website, where viewers have the option of watching the meeting with closed captions translated into multiple languages. Gracias por acompañarnos en esta reunión, tanto en persona como en línea a través de nuestra transmisión de YouTube. La grabación completa de la reunión estará disponible en YouTube y se archiverá a través del sitio web de la junta, donde los espectadores tienen la opción de ver la reunión con subtítulos traducidos a varios idiomas. Everybody, please join us in standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. To continue with public comment, each person who signed up was provided a copy of the open forum, basic rules, and advised when they sign up that policy BED applies to the process. Please respect the process during your presentation. As a reminder, each presenter is allowed three minutes. We do have several speakers signed up, however, everybody who signed up, signed up specific to an agenda item. So when we get to that agenda item, before we deliberate or before we discuss, I'll invite the speakers up, okay? So continuing with our agenda, we will go to executive session, but we do have a speaker signed up for executive session or for that agenda item for A. Veronica Hernandez, please.
Thank you. Good evening, President Nahara and interim superintendent Vazquez and members of the board. My name is Veronica Hernandez and I am the proud president of the Socorro American Federation of Teachers. My message tonight is less for this board than it is for our state leaders. On Saturday, Governor Rick Abbott signed into law a $1 billion private school voucher program against the will of most Texans. The governor spent most of last year promising that his state could afford to fully fund public schools and his voucher program. Well, here we are, his voucher program and public school funding is still being held hostage in the legislature. The Senate and the House have yet to agree on an approach or act on other bills. Lawmakers are playing politics with our schools funding while this war tonight deals with the consequences. Because of the irresponsibility in Austin, our schools and Socorro ISD will lose tonight beloved vital employees from our elementary, middle, and high schools. Because the state has abandoned its duty to fully fund public education, this district and our kids will lose teachers and staff in critical subjects like math and science and in the programs that make kids want to come to school, like fine arts and career and technical education. This district calls this nonrenewals, but I will call them what they are, Greg Abbott's layoffs. The district, I'm sorry, to our brothers and sisters whose livelihood has been jeopardized, I share the frustration, the anger, and the grief. Please know that you have not failed. Nothing about what happens tonight is your fault. Texas has failed our kids even as you have shown them and showed up for them at every turn. I urge everybody who is upset by what's happening here today to turn your anger where it belongs, at the Capitol in Austin. Our legislators should know no peace until they decide to do their jobs and fund our schools. Call them, email them, come to the Capitol to testify. Socorro AFT members have done so, as have some of our trustees, but these lawmakers are not listening. So the only solution I can think of is let get louder. Thank you, and let's continue to fight forward because Texas can and must do better. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll continue then with executive session. This meeting is to be closed. One to receive and discuss the recommendation of administration to propose nonrenewal of the 2024-25 term contract for the following individuals under policy DFFB as part of the district's reduction in force and as a result of the program and staffing changes approved by the board. Attached to this as Exhibit 1 is the list of individuals to be reviewed and considered by the board. This item is being considered under Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.074 and 2 to receive and discuss the recommendation of administration to terminate the probationary contract at the conclusion of the contract period for the following individuals under policy DFAB to serve the best interests of the district. Attached as Exhibit 2 is the list of individuals to be reviewed and considered by the board. This item is being considered under Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.074. The time is 5:37 PM and the date is Monday, May 5th, 2025.
Team SISD is a true Texas public school district that gives us unforgettable memories, traditions, experiences, and the opportunities we need to have a bright, successful future. Want to be a health professional? Once a bulldog, always a bulldog. Want to design skyscrapers? There's an empire for that. Have you heard, "The early bird gets the worm"? Well, that's why they fear the falcons. We don't just rise, this is Sparta. We earn our horns and trailblaze and overcome to be the first and the best. I know, I know, it sounds extra, but it's just our flex. For over 60 years, Socorro ISD has set its sights on our future with vision, innovation, investing, building, and planning to prepare us for the real world. These are our opportunities, and we will seize them.
Socorro ISD registration opens March 3rd for kinder through 12th grade. Enroll in a district known for exceptional academics, award-winning fine arts and athletic programs, and cutting-edge facilities. Our groundbreaking academies and career programs provide excellent learning opportunities. Out-of-district transfer applications are now open. Don't wait, secure your child's spot today and seize your opportunity in Team SISD.
Socorro ISD offers 45 different pathways in CTE. We have added PTEx, Pathways and Technology Early College High Schools. We have seven advanced academies. And we also, throughout the district, offer seven early college high school opportunities for our students. So a lot of choices students have to make while in eighth grade so that they have a pleasant experience while in high school.
My favorite part of HPA is the fact that we get like opportunities to go outside of school and go into hospitals so we can actually get that hands-on and like actually view what is actually happening in the hospitals and clinicals. Since I'm interested in being an RN, I got to talk to actual RNs about their experience, where they're from. We went to UMC, we went to Providence. I also got to do middle schools and elementaries. It really helps you like build that, build that understanding of how everybody's different and you have to understand and like care to their needs.
Because it is really a dream that if I was a kid, I would have never believed that I was doing all this stuff that I was doing in the program. They make me feel like family. There's a sense that I don't get in any other setting. When I'm at school, I don't feel like I'm at school. I feel like I'm doing something that I want to and the day goes by quick, super quick. And it just gives that sense of well-being and family and it really is a dream because I would have never thought I would be in the position that I'm in.
Students can select up to three different programs or academies that they would like to attend, and through the lottery process, they're placed in those different academies or early college high schools that they choose. We've had over 80% first selection offered for our students.
The Libertas Academy is a law and government program where students can learn how to be lawmakers, law officials, learn about the government, how it was brought up, and basically prepare us for the future in some sort of government professional field. My parents and I, we actually thought it was a really amazing opportunity, even as a high school student, starting your freshman year, that you get to start learning about these career fields and that you get to really experience it firsthand and you get to learn about these careers that you want to go into and get a step ahead of everybody else. It was just, we had to take it. It was an amazing opportunity.
The academy provides a really unique experience because it offers students the rigor of not only college, but also like kind of a taste of law school, which is really unique. It's something that we really don't have anywhere nearby. So I think that it's really, really cool that it provides that educational opportunity, but also it provides that community. A lot of people think that we're just all business, that we don't have fun, but we really have become like a family. I really have found some amazing friends, amazing professors.
It's taken a huge investment, not only in equipment, facilities, but also in maintaining our teachers' credentials, getting them training, keeping them up to date with current standards. Socorro has always been known as a progressive district by what we offer our kids is supersedes most other school districts across the state. And I have great confidence that we'll continue to progress with what's leading our schools.
So our dual-language program consists of two different types of models. We have the 90-10, which is for pre-k students, and this is where the students are in a classroom with one teacher. Depending on their first language, they're going to get 90% of the instruction in English, 10% in Spanish, or vice versa, 90% in Spanish, 10% in English. And then we have our 50-50 model, and this starts from kinder all the way to fifth grade, and this is where the students have two teachers where they're learning both languages, English and Spanish, 50-50% of the time depending on the taught subject and language.
The dual-language program is so much more than just learning to speak in another language. They learn how to read, how to write, and they learn about the other culture and how to appreciate it, and they become very successful.
In order for the students to become bilingual and bilingual, they need to make sure that they are consistent with the program at least five years. Once a student completes five full years in the dual-language program, then they can qualify for a Spanish high school credit that they take with them when they're in middle school.
I think it's important to learn English and Spanish so people can feel happy that you can communicate them in Spanish or English. So when I'm older, I could, and they ask me questions in Spanish, I can answer them in Spanish and English.
We are growing our students in a very competitive global society where dualism is extremely important in any type of business that you go into, not just into education. The students, we're preparing them to be global competitive citizens of society, and having that dualism in their pocket is really going to open doors for them.
I can say that SISD is truly the district that offers many opportunities for our students, and I vouch that dual-language is not just opening doors for our students to become bilingual and bilingual, but it's opening doors for their future.
Socorro ISD makes learning innovative. We fly drones, we take center stage, we take care of the environment, and we learn to take care of our health and become lifelong learners. Our new elementary academies offer unique programs to inspire, challenge, and prepare us for success. Register now at sisd.net and seize your opportunity in Team SISD.
The Socorro Independent School District is committed to helping all students find their voice and achieve their highest potential. We understand the important role that families play in our children's education, and we welcome you, our military-connected families, to Team SISD. With 46 schools designated Purple Star campuses by the Texas Education Agency, the most of any school district in the El Paso region, Team SISD is committed to supporting the unique needs of military-connected students and their families through a variety of resources and services. These include a comprehensive website for military families, a campus transition program, multiple special events, military family life counselors, and a military liaison at each of our 51 campuses who all reach out and serve our military-connected families. Team SISD stays in close contact with our Fort Bliss counterparts to access and share information, ideas, and trainings to provide the best education for our 6,500-plus military-connected students. To assist with the social and emotional needs of our students, we maximize support services by engaging with our school counselors, including our military and family life counselor and local agencies such as NAMI, the YWCA, Child Guidance Center, local daycare providers, and the Paso del Norte and Meadows Family Leadership Council. We value and greatly appreciate the sacrifice our military parents make for our country, our community, and our children. We salute you, and we are delighted to have the opportunity to serve you and your family in our district. Thank you for being part of our district and helping us ensure that Team SISD is the right choice for endless opportunities. Hello and welcome to SISD TV News, where we deliver the latest news about the Socorro Independent School District. In our top story, the Socorro Independent School District hosted the 2025 SISD Teacher of the Year Elite Eight reception at the Technology Service Center. All SISD campus teachers of the year were honored with a special token of appreciation commemorating their achievement, and the top Elite Eight finalists were announced during the special ceremony.
The words can't describe the gratitude that I have to the district, to my campus, to my administration team, to my colleagues, to my wife, my family. Just very, very blessed, overwhelming feeling of just, you know, gratefulness.
You're always trying to like just say your name in your brain over and over and over, and then you actually see it, and then it's like, oh my gosh! And you're just shocked, shocked that out of all the 50 teachers, you're one of the top eight selected.
Dr. Ignacio Astorga, principal at Socorro High School, was named the District Nine Administrator of the Year at this year's District Nine Spring Conference at America's High School. The purpose of District Nine is to develop leadership abilities in students and advisors, promote democracy as a way of life, and establish and uphold high standards for local school councils.
It's a hard work of everybody. It's a culmination of not just the faculty and staff, but of what our students do and what our expectations are of our kids. And our expectations should be high for any school that we're at. And if you challenge the kids, they will reach that challenge, and that's what our kids have done, they have reached that challenge. And this is just a culmination of everything. So this award's not for me, it's for Socorro High School and our kids.
I was so honored that Ms. Lopez reached out to me to write a letter of rec. for him. He has been my principal since the beginning of freshman year, so throughout this whole journey, I have been with him, nothing but support from him, and anything we have given of ideas or anything that we need, he has supported us 100% and no doubt in anything that we can do. Writing the letter of recommendation for him felt so natural, anything came out, and just describing him as a wonderful principal was amazing to do. And I know he supports a student council, so to put him in a D9 level was just an amazing experience to do, and I'm so glad, not only myself, but the rest of my council could help and surprise him. It was hard getting him out here because he knows everything that goes on in our campus, so a little lie to get him here, I was totally okay with it. And seeing his surprise and seeing his reaction just made my day and my year to make him a D9 Administrator of the Year.
The American Federation of Teachers gave away over 1,000 books to students and teachers of all grade levels at Colonel Ben Narbith Elementary School as part of the Reading Opens the World Initiative with First Book.
We believe in giving back to our community, much-needed resources to make sure that our students succeed. We like to give them away and make sure that there's plenty of opportunities for our kids to be successful and thrive.
It's a whole other world. It opens up a whole new world for our students and for them to just get away from the TV and the social media and just sit down with a good book and enjoy that. They're really excited about it.
I always suggest our kids to read because it can help them be like super smart. They can learn how to pronounce bigger words.
Socorro ISD interim superintendent James Vazquez surprised the top four school support employee of the year finalists with a special gift and visited each of their campuses and departments. Francisco Felix Martinez is the head custodian at Mission Early College High School.
For me, the most important thing is that I'm part of a bigger thing than all of us. And what it is for me is that having a clean classroom, clean restrooms, and to see those kids, the students that are happy and when they graduate and they graduate from college is something that is priceless to me because I'm part of it and I'm making a difference for my campus.
Armando Álvarez is a crosswalk monitor at Loma Verde Elementary School.
I couldn't believe it though, you know? I didn't think you were coming to see me, like I said earlier, though. I was just like doing my regular stuff like I always do, trying to help the kids, make sure that they have their food and everything, but I am really surprised.
Jesús Salas is the head custodian for the Department of Athletics.
I feel so proud myself, and I feel so proud of the team that we work here in the Athletics Department, and to be recognized, like, it's awesome, guys. Also, I feel like the district, like the whole district employs, all custodians, I'm representing that, not only my facility, I'm representing like maintenance and operations at all, you know? So I feel amazing.
And Deney Muñoz is the campus secretary at Specialist Rafael Hernando III Middle School.
We have an amazing team here, and they're my babies. The team here is literally my baby, and just to see my team out here in the front supporting me when I'm the one that supports them all the time, it's just so fulfilling. It's really just an emotion that's so fulfilling.
The University of Texas at El Paso awarded excellent scholarships to 38 students from America's High School and 19 students from Montwood High School. The scholarships that range from $2,000 to $8,000 will allow students to pursue their dreams of higher education at UTEP.
It goes beyond just that you pick up the ranking, that they do so many things. Their family dynamics are so complex, and there are students that sometimes they never thought of getting a scholarship and only like smart students know, everything matters. So you will have students, you will have, my son, my daughter is getting a scholarship, a UTEP Excellence Scholarship, and we're so proud of that.
I feel really good about myself because during like the previous years, I was kind of like down about my grades, but like I got them up, and knowing that I got this scholarship like just gives me that peace of mind.
This is just an exciting opportunity. Relieving this financial burden is just something that everyone is looking for. I believe being able to be a recipient of the scholarship is something so honorable. UTEP was the university I was planning on attending, so just having that leverage on that concern of like, how am I going to pay for this and all that, like just it going away is something that I'm grateful to receive as a person.
I'm actually really excited. I didn't know it was happening. I thought this was like an information thing, like they'd be like, oh, like you're a finalist, but you have to do this, this, and this to win it. I didn't know we were going to win, but I'm actually really excited.
The Libertas Academy for Law, Government, and Public Administration was awarded the Haddon Summers Civic Foundation Grant for the ninth year in a row. This grant allows students to learn about civics during their spring break and introduces incoming eighth graders to the Advanced Academic Academy. This year's focus was the First Amendment.
We use that topic because I think the kids find it very interesting, but it also allows them an opportunity to understand the concept of researching, the concepts of looking up court decisions, and then keeping updated with, you know, current decisions, with how it works. And then we also gave them an insight of to, you know, what are their rights on the school campus, because they think that they have unlimited rights, and it gives them an opportunity to see how, you know, Supreme Court decisions, local decisions also impact their daily lives.
I feel like it's going to give me a head start at life mostly, and it's going to help me advance in school, help me with a lot of different things.
I mean, I already know about the First Amendment, but it goes so deep into detail about like our freedoms and stuff and the court cases about the First Amendment.
Team SISD sophomores, juniors, and seniors explored future career options at the Annual College Career and Job Expo at Montwood High School. Students got the opportunity to speak with college, technical school representatives, and meet with local and meet with local business and industry partners to learn about possible opportunities available to them, such as internships or employment opportunities.
The reality of our students going to school without working is it's been an issue here in El Paso and nationwide now. Information provided about our state's graduation rates, UTEP's graduation rates are up, but they're still a six-year, forty-two percent graduation rate, which means our kids who are going to school at UTEP, they're taking time to go there, and they're most likely working, supporting the family, and paying bills as they're going to school. So they leave our schools with college credits as well as skills to help them find a higher-paying job. They probably don't have to work so much to be able to achieve their goals in a quicker time period.
I really like it, and everybody was super helpful about their tips with interviews, and overall, it was super nice. I've been trying to look for more of a better job that pays better, obviously, because I'm about to graduate high school, and I need to start looking for a better job.
Coming here made me realize like a lot, like you can benefit for so much just by showing up, asking questions, and asking around, like how does this work and stuff like that? So yeah, it's really beneficial. And going to summer, I do want to look for, again, internships or jobs or whatnot, make that like little money on the extra side, and again, take that like big step next in life, you know?
That's our show for today. I hope you've enjoyed learning about the latest in the Socorro Independent School District. Make sure to follow us on X with the handle @socorroisd. Also be sure to friend us on Facebook, subscribe to our YouTube channel, Team SISD, and visit our website. Thank you again, and see you next time. Hello and welcome to SISD TV News, where we deliver the latest news about the Socorro Independent School District. In our top story, Team SISD High Schools officially launched the Region Nineteen Girls Flag Football Pilot Championship in partnership with the Dallas Cowboys and the Houston Texans. The schools participated in a blind draft to determine the team they will be affiliated with.
This opportunity is for those female athletes. I think of my own daughter when we talk about this. And so we just want to make sure that they have an opportunity to participate in a growing sport. There are scholarship opportunities. Some of the schools, smaller schools across the nation, are offering scholarships for it. So it's just another opportunity to showcase the amazing female athletes we have in the El Paso region.
I'm just really excited to get to, you know, learn as a coach and then help the girls learn and, you know, be football players. Like that's just something that we're going to learn together, and I think it's going to be a really great experience, and then hopefully expand it to UIL. I mean, that's going to be amazing.
It's truly their opportunity. They deserve the right to go compete. Football is the greatest sport, in my opinion, in this world. And so, and so, we do so much for our men. We go above and beyond for our men, tackle, and all these different things, seven-on-seven for our boys. It's our opportunity, it's our duty to make sure that we give those same opportunities, and we give the same energy, we give the same effort to our young ladies because they deserve it, they've earned it, and it's just their time.
Students from Socorro ISD's six comprehensive high schools participated in Career Con XXL at Eastlake High School. Students had the opportunity to have one-on-one conversations with employers, learn about exciting career paths, and get advice on taking the necessary steps towards their dream job.
This is one of two Career Con events we have. All of our sophomores take a financial literacy class, and it's a semester course. So we have a job con or a career con in the fall for about eighteen hundred students. And we have one again in the spring for approximately eighteen hundred students. And financial literacy, we cover three different areas, personal financial literacy, as well as college readiness and career readiness. Students create their endorsement when they're eighth grade. They revisit it when they're a sophomore. The last time they can change their endorsement is by the start of their junior year. So it's prime time for the kids to prep for college courses and also to review their endorsement and review the different careers that they can prepare for while in high school.
We get to like experience all these type of careers that we could like go into the future. Like we have different options on which jobs we could participate. We have different options we can explore because not everybody likes the same job, and not everybody's going to have the same job. So we just get to experience the different careers.
It helps a lot like with people who aren't really sure like what they want to do after high school. And just helps me like be aware of like what are my options and like what exactly like the jobs are into detail.
Team SISD's Project Search Program.
We're back in session. The time is six oh seven. The date is Monday, May fifth, twenty twenty-five, and we have a confirmed quorum. Continuing with our agenda, new business. Five A, discuss and take action on a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of the Socorro Independent School District's Tax Revenue, Tax and Revenue Anticipation Note. Mr. Solis?
Good evening, Board President Ahora, members of the board, and Superintendent Mr. Vazquez. David Solis, Chief Financial Officer for the district. At this time, I'd like to introduce our guest. Joining us virtually is Mr. J. Juárez and Ms. Angela Avila, our representatives from Bond Counsel McCall, Parkhurst, and Horton. Also with us in person this evening are representatives from Estada Yanohosa Investment Baking, Dr. Anke Magallanes, Mr. Don Gonzalez, and Mr. Matt Lujan. I'd like to invite Dr. Magallanes to the podium for this evening's presentation.
Good evening, President Ahora, trustees, Mr. Vazquez, members of the audience. As Mr. Solis mentioned, Anke Magallanes with Estada Yanohosa were the district's financial advisors for financing. And with me, Mr. Don Gonzalez and Mr. Matt Lujan as well. As you know, we've been working with administration in order to provide a short-term financing. Just as the previous situation in October, we're looking for the next fiscal year in order to just bridge a gap in which financing is needed while we're expecting revenues from the state and also local collections from taxes. So we proceeded back in March with these discussions as far as looking forward when these financing was going to be needed in order to bridge the gap. And then we proceeded in April to move forward with looking at bank options. And today, we're going to present to you a bid that was proposed. We feel it's very reasonable and favorable for the district. So the financing team, Socorro ISD, Estada Yanohosa's financial advisor, McCall as the bond counsel. And then we're going to be presenting the bid from JP Morgan Chase, and we'll discuss that in a moment. As we mentioned, the timeframe, we're looking at approval for today and then closing on June fourth for the district to receive funds on that date as well. There's an outstanding debt profile. Currently, the district doesn't have any long-term debt on the M and O side. It's all, all the debt that it currently has is voted-approved debt from the voters, which comes from the INS portion, a separate tax levy to just address and pay off this certain particular debt that's currently outstanding. The ratings there that you have is Moody's A-two and Fitch A-minus, and we'll talk about that in a bit because those will be important to some of the JP Morgan's qualifications for approval. So we did have three bids come in, JP Morgan Chase, PNC, and Texas Capital Bank with the most favorable bid coming from JP Morgan with a rate of three point five nine seven. Last year, when we were going through this process, we had a bid that was approved at four point five percent. So during this process, it was, and you know, your administration was very, very helpful in assisting and getting information as needed, compiling the data that was required and requested from these banks. And when we came this year, the banks saw the process that the district has been doing and the gains and looking, trying to look at a balanced budget moving forward, especially with the current situation with still no extra revenue from the state. So looking forward and seeing what you, the rate that was approved last year, investors are seeing the district, you know, as a favorable situation progressing through this situation. So as you noticed, the rate came in lower than last year at four point, from four point five percent to three point five nine seven. So in total, through a maturity date of February second, the total debt service for the note will be thirty-five million, nine hundred ninety-eight thousand, three hundred twelve dollars. Just a breakdown of sources and uses, going from project fund thirty-five million, projected cost of issuance of one hundred forty-five thousand. Any excess from that will be returned to, any excess that remains from that will be returned to the district. So that's just a projected cost of issuance. And a little market update. So just again, going back to the bid summary, and in summary, the option of JP Morgan Chase is a favorable option. Again, this is a situation where many districts throughout the region and throughout the state are facing as still financing is still pending from the state. So we're dealing with other districts throughout the state as well in this current situation and creating a bridge to support the operation of the district as new funding from the state and revenues come in from tax collections. At this moment, I'll entertain any questions from the board or if Don has any other comments. And one thing that, for JP Morgan, one of the items is, as we mentioned, the rating of A-two, A-minus from the rating agencies. And technically, what that is, is pretty much the credit of the district, A-one, A-two. It's still of investor-grade credit for the investors out there. And so one of the items is if the district were to go below that rating, down to a triple B-plus, they would consider that as a clause in order, as a clause to increase that rate by four percent. So, or if the district, for whatever reason, were to default and not pay on February second, also there will be a default clause to raise increase of four percent above what is stated. We'll entertain any questions at this time. Questions?
I have a question for Mr. Solis. Mr. Solis, thank you. I know that we did this previously, and you had already forecasted and shared that we were possibly going to have to do this again. So my question to you is, are we going to have to do this a third time?
I anticipate if we do not receive any new revenue either from the state or say additional increase in taxes, the tax levy, that this would be a reoccurrence until we reach a point where we can increase our fund balance, where we would no longer need this note.
And what does our fund balance have to be at to where we don't have to do this again?
So policy says seventy-five days, so we're looking, so that's about twenty percent of our, most of our, about twenty percent of our operating budget. We would have to be closer to a hundred million as far as being in line with policy in order for us to be in a position where we probably don't need a note. And we're probably looking at having to increase fund balance by at least thirty-five to fifty million. And that would be very similar to what the note is right now. And this is just an estimate right now.
And I know that Mr. Magallanes had to mention, you know, the possible default rate. Is that, the way that we're trending at this point, is that a reality or is that very far from happening?
So recently, you've seen the Fitch and Moody's ratings. They have downgraded us two notches with a negative outlook. They have, in the summary, they had mentioned what it would take for us to either maintain the rating or get a more stable outlook. And part of that is living within our means, as I mentioned before. Adopting a balanced budget would definitely help us. Any additional revenue that we receive from the state is a plus. So what they're really looking at is how can we get above that ten percent? Because we have dropped below ten percent of our fund balance. So what we need to do is show them, show the rating agencies that we are fiscally responsible and disciplined enough to live within our budget. And also, moving forward, if we can start building surpluses, even if it's small, even if it's small as two million a year, five million a year, it does show that the district is in a position to stabilize its financial outlook. So that outlook really is up to us to make sure that we stay fiscally disciplined so that way there is a more favorable outlook for the district. What I can tell you and what the rating agencies have shared with us is that the negative position is across education as far as the sector. So we have seen more districts actually drop, you know, one or two ratings. So it's not, it's not just Socorro ISD. There are other districts within the state that are also seeing this. Part of it has to do is we have been dipping into our fund balance more than required to.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Questions? Do you have a motion for the resolution?
Motion to approve.
So whoever's making the motion, so administration recommends approval of the resolution, the note purchase agreement, and all other necessary actions and procedures required for the issuance and sell the Tax and Revenue Anticipation Note Series 2025 in the principal amount of thirty-five million, one hundred forty-five thousand to JP Morgan Chase Bank National Association at the interest rate of three point five nine seven zero percent as presented. If I may, if you are making a motion, there is a yellow sheet that I've provided to you similar to last time with a specific motion language for this item.
Motion to approve as presented.
A motion made by Mrs. Macias for the motion as stated by Mr. Solis, seconded by Mr. Guerra. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The item passes. Thank you. Moving on then to Item 5B. We do have several speakers signed up for Item 5B. I won't read the public comment statement again, but please remember you do have three minutes. And our first speaker is Philip Thomas Lane, please.
Good evening, Board President Ahora, Interim Superintendent Mr. Vazquez, and members of the board. Back in February, you had a much different audience in the House. You had a complete full House. You had a complete full house. You had an overflow room because members of the community in your district were very concerned about the number of people who would be laid off by the district. And at the time, the number that was being presented was 300, up to 300. Tonight, you're going to be making a decision on a number that is much less than 50. And what I've not seen from the district is all of the background information, the financial information that would explain why you could go from in February, looking at laying off up to 300 people, and now you're only looking at slightly less than 50. I'm concerned because your financial balance isn't great. You're, you're in a very precarious place. And I'm hoping that the right decision is made tonight so that, you know, something horrible financially doesn't happen down the road. And so what I would like to see is maybe the release, you know, the, the discussion of all that information that went into the decision instead of 300 to bring it down to 50. Now, I'm not interested in laying off people to lay off people. I'm glad if all we need to do is lay off a small number of people, I wish it'd be nobody. But I'm very interested in, in the financial information that went into the decision to lay off the number of people you'll be discussing tonight.
Our next speaker, Nicholas J. Enoch.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Nicholas Enoch. I'm a partner at the law firm of Lubin Enoch and Bustamante. As part of our union side labor practice, we serve as outside counsel for the Texas State Teachers Association. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Isadora Lopez, a dedicated educator who's service to the district spans 23 years and far beyond the classroom. On April 4th, 2025, Mr. Lopez received a notice of intent to recommend non-renewal of his term contract. We respectfully request that you decline interim superintendent James Vazquez's recommendation. Mr. Lopez has made significant multifactor contributions to the Socorro education community, not just as a teacher, but as a coach for football and basketball and as a mentor in destination imagination. He's poured his time, energy, and heart into our students. His impact reaches far beyond test scores. It's about the doors he has opened and the lives he has helped change. If the board does proceed with non-renewal, we do intend to promptly appeal. And I should add, in conjunction with the previous speaker, those would be the, the, exactly the types of topics we will get into in that, in that proceeding. On February 19th, Dr. Michael Iannosa shared with the board his experience managing a 1,000 employee layoff as superintendent in Dallas. The teachers' union told him then that there is a process and it must be followed, no shortcuts. The same goes here. Financial exigency does not excuse skipping process. We are here because this, this decision deserves careful review, not only out of fairness to Mr. Lopez, but to preserve the integrity of the policies that this board has established. If we proceed to a hearing under policy DFBB, we will ask, has the district truly implemented the program change it cited as justification? And has it applied the board's criteria under policy DFFB fairly and consistently? We respectfully request in the first instance that you decline superintendent Vazquez's recommendation to non-renew Mr. Lopez. I thank you for your consideration.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth Genova.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Elizabeth Genova, and I currently teach at Wentzus Middle School, where I have been employed for the last six years of my 15 years as an instructor. From childhood, I hoped to become a teacher. And after graduating from Mattwood High School in 1999, I knew that I wanted to teach in what I considered the best district in El Paso, SISD. It took me a while to reach this goal. I married early, moved to Australia, and after my husband passed away from cancer, I came back to El Paso with nothing and worked my way through college to get a degree in education. I've collaborated with local artists and brought my training and expertise to Wentzus Middle School, where I have developed a bond with my students and a kinship with my coworkers. Health issues have seen me hospitalized over 15 times in the last few years, but the district's insurance has literally kept me alive and able to do what I love most, which is instilling a love of art in young minds. Now my health, livelihood, and everything I've worked towards are about to be pulled from under me. I stand here today knowing full well that you've probably already made up your mind regarding not only my case, but the others mentioned on your agenda. However, I want you to know personally what will happen when you terminate my contract. I will likely lose my house. I will lose my health insurance and the medications I need. I will have to move elsewhere to find work or leave the teaching profession altogether. And all of this will be through no fault of my own. Please reconsider my termination and grant me a one-year contract extension.
Our next speaker, I apologize in advance if I mispronounce, please correct me, Eric
Hi. Every time I show up here, you guys mispronounce my name. Back again, second time in three months. A couple of questions for you. By the way, I'm here to support my best friend, Elizabeth Genova. I sent you guys an email about her individually today. Didn't hear back from any one of you. I don't know if you guys look at your emails or not, but I'm here to support her. I have a few questions for you as well. The teachers and staff were not officially notified about this meeting today. I want to know why that is. That's why we have such a low turnout over here. You got to ask yourself, why are the people who are being terminated not here? That's the reason, right? Was it necessary to begin these proceedings during Teacher Appreciation Week? Did you choose that purposely? I really want to know because I understand the irony behind that, right? There's no law that requires you to name the, the list of all 45 teachers who are about to lose their jobs, not through any fault of their own. Did you really want to make certain that they have embarrassment? All of their names were posted on X, and they were also posted in the PDF, which is easily available. It's like the crucible all over again. They're about to lose their jobs and you're embarrassing them by putting their names in front of the public, all right? Above every list of terminated employees in the agenda notes is a section labeled Central Office. And right below that shows the number of administrative staff you've decided to remove. It reads none. Do you really need to rub our faces in the fact that you're more than willing to cut those who work with your students while you leave Central Office intact? If there's no, nobody being removed from Central Office, why is it even in the agenda? I really want to know that. All teachers listed in the agenda were called into the principal's office and had a determination form. Do you really need to kick a person in the teeth during one of their worst moments of their lives by attaching every legal code applicable as evidence of your iron fist? I'm sending each of you a personal email. I did that about her particularly. I didn't hear back from anybody. I'd like to know what it is we can do. Would you rather not be bothered? I mean, this is the name and the face to what you're about to do. I, I really want to force that. At no point in the last three months have I heard of any other attempt to save the district money other than by slashing your staff. What are your low populated campuses? Where, you should be closing your populated, your low populated campuses, right? Why is it that happening? Why haven't you considered a four-day work week? How can you seriously justify keeping two stadiums open at the expense of your employees? I listened to all of this two months ago, didn't hear back from anything. I haven't seen anything news about any of that, right? I'm here today with the expectation, I'm hoping you'll allow her to keep her job because like she said, she's on 15 different medications, she's been to the hospital 15 times. If you cut her, as far as we know, she has no other avenue of insurance, right? And I'm fully aware, probably going to terminate her because I'm assuming that's what other names are on that list, right? She's going to lose her health insurance, she may lose her house. And I sincerely hope that you can live with all that because you can look at her face and you'll see that that is one of the 45 people you're taking down today.
Continuing then with item 5B, Mr. Blanco and Ms. Stiles, I believe.
Before we get started, there's, I just kind of want to give a brief update. So, good evening, President Nahara, members of the board and superintendent Mr. Vazquez. I'm Selena Stiles, Chief Human Resources Officer for the district. And I would like to provide the board and the community with a quick reminder of why the reduction in force was recommended, an update on the process taken, the status of the reduction in force, and the support being provided to those impacted. During the regular board meeting in February, administration came before you to recommend a reduction in force. The purpose or reason for the reduction in force was to close a projected deficit for 2526 school year of $38.3 million. In the slide, you can see that the current deficit for 2425 school year is $24.3 million. That total with the projected student enrollment decrease for the 2526 school year to be more than 700 students, and the projected health fund transfer from the fund balance of $7 million brings the projected deficit for 2526 school year to $38.3 million. Mr. Vazquez tasked Mr. Solis and his team to reduce the deficit to start the 2526 school year with a balanced budget. Through collaboration with cabinet, Mr. Solis and his team identified the cost savings you see on this slide. The reductions are projected to result in about a $30.3 million in savings, bringing the projected deficit to approximately $8 million. The program redesign, staffing formula changes, and closing current vacancies were all part of the plan to identify the reduction in force areas. When the reduction in force was approved in February, the Department of Human Resources put a plan of action into place on how we would ensure that policy DFFB was enforced. The plan of action consisted of a communication plan for principals. The initial briefing included staffing meetings that were held with principals to introduce and explain policy DFFB, an overview providing of the policy and its purpose and the steps to be taken, and then finally, a discussion and identification to the affected employment areas. The second step of that process for identifying the impacted employees was following the criteria identified in DFFB and following the sequin, the sequential criteria to be applied to include qualifications, performance, extra duties, professional background, and Each principal was provided with an Excel document that required principals to identify the needs of the campus. They were to insert their teachers, their certification credentials, the results of their most recent summative, and any disciplinary documents that the employee may have going 36 months back. And then they, we provided a separate Excel tab where they could track the, the overall score of the evaluation, identify any extra duty performed, identify any professional experience related to their current or projected assignment, and then their seniority. However, it had to be followed in order. So if through criteria one, individuals were identified, they did not continue on to the following criteria. That's how the policy is written. Through the Excel documents, principals were required to upload any evidence for employees. So if there was any documentation provided and a copy of the evaluation that was uploaded as well. The deadline and vetting process. So the deadline, principals had to submit their sheets no later than March 7th, 2025. And as the sheets were submitted, we, HR created a committee to include our internal auditor, Ms. Guillen, and we began to vet that. So we went through every single campus and we re-verified everything that was submitted. So we verified certification, job performance, we even reevaluated evaluations, recalculated scores. We went through the entire process. In some instances, it changed from what was submitted to us. As the impacted employees were identified, we verified and confirmed them, and then we notified employees of the non-renewal. Well, I take that back. The individuals that were impacted were placed into a separate pool. So as I continue, I'll explain to you how many individuals we've been able to place through the process. But as vacancies came up and we placed individuals, we reapplied the process to the, to that group of individuals. So if it was, for example, an ELR teacher at the high school, it requires a very specific certification, we pulled anybody with those certifications and reapplied the process for, for that, to identify who would be placed in those vacancies. The non-renew, for those that we were not able to place, they were notified of the non-renewal of their contract at the end of the 2425 school year. As of today, May 5th, there were a total of 172 employees identified as part of the reduction in force. 112 of them have been placed into vacant positions for the 2526 school year. These employees have been notified of the reassignment for the upcoming 25 school year pending their contract approval for the 2526 school year during the May 21st board meeting. 17 of those resigned, leaving the 43 that were, are being brought to you today. We are closing approximately 250 positions overall. I'll note that the number of resignations is only for those that were impacted by the reduction in force. We've had a total of 102 resignations for the month of June and a total of 229 that have resigned between April and July. You can see that the board agenda item is broken down by the categories that were identified as part of the reduction in force and approved by the board. You will see that in many of the areas, there was none in that category. The reason for that is either we were able to place individuals into vacancies, saving jobs, or employees resigned. While we're happy to say that we're not reducing employees by 300, we are empathetic and regret the 43 employees that will be impacted. We are providing support to staff through our employee assistance program. The employee assistance program is available to assist employees impacted by the reduction in force through grief counseling and any other options that they have available. The Department of Human Resources has made every effort to place these individuals and will continue to do so through the regular board meeting in June. So what that means is even a couple of hours before this board meeting, as we receive notice that individuals are either receiving certifications in those areas where we have vacancies, or we receive a vacancy in an area that matches a certification that one of these individuals have, we can bring a contract for your approval and it will be through the June board meeting. So we still have that option available. That's all I have. Do you have any questions?
No questions, Ms. Stiles?
Mr. Nahara, I'm sorry, I thought of a question for Ms. Stiles. I apologize. Ms. Stiles, before we begin the next process, were positions vacated or do we have a reduction in force at the central office administratively? Can you share? So there were four administrative positions identified through the reduction in force. They've all been placed. There were five counseling positions, they were placed. There were 38 paraprofessionals, actually 30, 30, 40, and 38 have been placed. So across the board, we're trying to place where we can. Some positions, there's more of versus others. They're a little bit harder to place. Okay. Thank you.
May I?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Board President Nahara, Superintendent Vazquez, members of the board, Steve Blanco, legal counsel for the district. Yes, sir.
I just thought of a question. I know we heard earlier about the concern about the names being listed. Something certainly that I shared a concern with you about. It's my understanding that that is the process that we're required to, or that we have to
So, good question. I completely understand the concern raised by individuals tonight about the impact that it has on those who were identified as being proposed for non-renewal or otherwise being separated under the probationary contract area. It is an unfortunate requirement under the law that proper votes and notice be issued to affected employees. It is not the board's decision that it be done that way. It's mine and my law firm's recommendation that we be very specific as to how this being done. Several board members did reach out to me and ask if we could avoid... Several board members did reach out to me and ask if we could avoid identifying individuals by name, and I am uncomfortable with that process. So I'm going to handle the motions for each, and I will be reading the motion, asking the board to adopt the motion, and naming the affected employees by first initial last name in the area in which they work. Y'all understand that? Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Again, the first area that we are addressing is the CTE program offering, which was approved by the board. It is the recommendation of the administration and the superintendent that you adopt and approve the following motion. The motion would be, "I move to approve the recommendation of the superintendent and administration to propose the non-renewal of the term contract of the following individual under policy DFFB as part of the district's reduction in force and as a result of the program and staffing changes for the CTE program offerings approved by the board, and issue appropriate notice to the affected employee. The affected employee in this area is Kay Kessler, a teacher at Socorro High School, CTE engineering design teacher." If I could have a motion from a board member adopting that motion that I just made.
I adopt.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Garadella, seconded by Mrs. Nahada. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Item passes.
Thank you. The next item that we need to take up is the elementary fine arts redesign program area. Again, I'm going to ask the board to adopt and approve the following motion. "I move to approve the recommendation of the superintendent and administration to propose the non-renewal of the term contracts of the following individuals under policy DFFB as part of the district's reduction in force and as a result of the program and staffing changes for the elementary fine arts redesign approved by the board, and issue appropriate notices to the affected employees." Those affected employees being, I'm going to name them, Kay Eb, Fine Arts Department, TSA Fine Arts; Jay Gallardo, Fine Arts Department, TSA Fine Arts; A. Goveya, Fine Arts Department, TSA Fine Arts; E. Matula, Fine Arts Department, TSA Fine Arts; Jay Montoya, Fine Arts Department, TSA Fine Arts; P. Mora, Fine Arts Department, TSA Fine Arts; Kay Perez, Fine Arts Department, TSA Fine Arts; and Jay Ramirez, Fine Arts Department, TSA Fine Arts. If I can have a board member approve and adopt that motion.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Nahada, seconded by Ms. Garadella. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Item passes.
If I could just have it recorded, the two noes were Mr. Getta and Ms. Macias. Thank you. The next area with affected employees is the elementary staffing formula changes. The class size change from 22 to 1 ratio to 24 to 1 ratio through approval of class size waiver. Again, I'm going to ask the board to approve and adopt the following motion. "I move to approve the recommendation of the superintendent and administration to propose the non-renewal of the term contracts of the following, of the term contract of the following individual under policy DFFB as part of the district's reduction in force and as a result of the program and staffing changes for the elementary staffing formula changes approved by the board, and issue appropriate notice to the affected employee. The affected employee in this area is S. Prieto, Lujan Chavez Elementary School, 2nd grade teacher." If I could have a board member approve and adopt that motion, please.
I have one question. Is it okay for me to ask?
It is.
I'm sorry, Ms. Stiles. I know that you mentioned at the end of the presentation that the district will pay for passing scores when current teachers get certified in the following areas. Just looking at a 2nd grade teacher with attrition, what is our current attrition rate? Because we still have a good month or so. Is there a possibility for that person through attrition? Are these individuals going to have the first opportunity to come back to our district?
So our current attrition rate, Ms. Macias, and I kind of calculated it for the entire school year, so what we have received as resignations so far, overall, it's 10.2. For teachers, it's 9.3. And so to answer your question, yes, if we get a resignation that matches the certification for these individuals, then we will try to place them where we can. At this point, what's here is because we don't have a place to put them.
So you're still going to work, even though we're approving this, just for clarity?
Yes, ma'am.
If something comes up, elementary EC through 6, this individual has that certification, they will receive a personal communication to say, "This is an opportunity for you to apply," or will they be placed?
Right now, we have been placing them. So since they're still our employee through June 30th, we can still place them. And what we'll do is we'll bring a contract for approval for next year. So they'll get, right now, some of the reassignment letters that they've received, say, pending board approval. So we have contracts that will come to you for the May board meeting, and then they'll, if you all approve them, then their reassignment is confirmed.
Thank you for the clarity.
Yes, ma'am.
So a motion?
I adopt.
No, Ms. Macias did not make a motion. Asked a question.
I adopt.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that. Thank you.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Garadella, seconded by Mrs. Nahada. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Item passes. Who knows?
Again, the noes were Mr. Getta and Ms. Macias.
Correct.
Thank you. The next employment area that's been affected is the secondary staffing formula changes. Class size change for middle schools from 24 to 1 to 26 to 1 ratio. Again, I'm going to ask the board to adopt and approve the following motion. "I move to approve the recommendation of the superintendent and administration to propose the non-renewal of the term contracts of the following individuals under policy DFFB as part of the district's reduction in force and as a result of the program and staffing changes for the secondary staffing formula addressing class size changes approved by the board, and issue appropriate notices to the affected employees." Those affected employees are the following. C. Amato William D. Slider, Middle School, 6th grade math teacher. S. Diamondstein, Rafael Hernando, Middle School, Spanish LOTE teacher. C. Dawkins, Motwood Middle School, Science teacher. R. Franco, Rafael Hernando, Middle School, General Art teacher. C. Garcia, Bill Seibert, PK-8 School. S. E. CSR, E-LAR teacher. E. Genova, Manuel R. Puentez, Middle School, General Art teacher. I. Griego, J.A. Hambrick, PK-8 School, Physical Education teacher. I. Lopez, Salvador H. Sanchez, Middle School, E-LAR lab teacher. J. Mattis, William D. Slider, Middle School Intervention teacher. J. McQuine, J.A. Hambrick, PK-8 School, Guitar Choir Music teacher. M. Nava, Salvador H. Sanchez, Middle School Orchestra Music teacher. Dean Nunez, Motwood Middle School, Social Studies teacher. D. Phillips, Herschel Antoin, Middle School Math teacher. C. Ramos, Eastlake Middle School, 7th grade Reading ESL teacher. J., I'm sorry, L. Renovato, J.A. Hambrick, PK-38 School, Spanish LOTE teacher. And I'm going to ask the board to adopt and approve that motion as read.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Ms. Nahada, seconded by Ms. Garadella. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next affected area is the secondary staffing formula changes, high school and middle school positions that were previously staffed above the staffing formula. Again, I'm going to ask the board to adopt and approve the following motion. "I move to approve the recommendation of the superintendent and administration to propose the non-renewal of the term contracts of the following individuals under policy DFFB as part of the district's reduction in force and as a result of the program and staffing changes for the secondary staffing formula approved by the board, and issue appropriate notices to the affected employees." Those employees being M. Harp, Eldorado High School, CTE Construction Career teacher; A. Ventura, Missionary College High School, Social Studies Composite teacher. Could I have an adoption and approval of that motion, please?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mrs. Nahada, seconded by Ms. Garadella. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
The next agenda item is 5C.
Oh, correct. Moving on to 5C, "Discussion and Action to Specify the Manner of Hearing in accordance with Policy DFBB. Local for individual employees who were issued notice of the proposed non-renewal of a term contract." Mr. Blanco.
Thank you. The policy DFFB requires that when the board votes to propose non-renewal of term contracts under that policy and with the program and staffing changes that were approved by the board, that the board also make a determination on the manner of any hearing that has been requested. The hearing actually is requested under a different policy. It's DFBB, but policy DFFB and DFBB work together. So at this time, we're asking that the board approve the hearing manner, and that hearing manner would be in a motion as follows. "I move to approve the manner of hearing required under policy DFFB and DFBB to be a hearing before the Board of Trustees. Any hearing requested by any affected employee from the previous list that we just went over would be brought to the board for a hearing." Can I have somebody on the board adopt and approve that motion, please?
Approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Ms. Macias, seconded by Ms. Nahada. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Continuing then with item 5D. Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Recommendation of Administration to Terminate the Probationary Contract at the Conclusion of the Contract Period for the Following Individuals Under Policy DFAB to Serve the Best Interests of the District. Mr. Blanco.
Thank you, Board President Nahada. This is a separate agenda item. It is dealing with strictly probationary contracts. We've discussed the need for a reduction in force, and we've discussed the need to reduce contracts overall, one of the affected areas, and again, within the same program areas as were approved for the term contracts in the RIF, although not legally required. The administration believed it was appropriate to handle it the same way, and so probationary contracts were reviewed within those program areas and affected areas. We have several areas that we need to address now with probationary contracts. The first area to be addressed is the elementary fine arts redesign. Again, I'm going to ask the board to approve and adopt the following motion. "I move to approve the recommendation of the superintendent and administration to terminate the probationary contracts of the following individuals at the conclusion of the contract period under policy DFAB to serve the best interests of the district and issue appropriate notices to the affected employees." Those affected employees in this area are L. Cuellar Edwards, Fine Arts Department, TSA Fine Arts; H. Fulmar, Fine Arts Department, TSA Fine Arts; A. Gomez, Fine Arts Department, TSA Fine Arts; and V. Macik, M-A-C-I-K, in case I said it wrong, Fine Arts Department, TSA Fine Arts. Could I have a board member please approve and adopt that motion?
I adopt.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Garadella, seconded by Mrs. Nahada. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Item passes. Mr. Blanco.
Thank you. The next area that we need to consider is the restructure staffing for academic programs with low student participation. I'm going to ask the board to adopt and approve the following motion. "I move to approve the recommendation of the superintendent and administration to terminate the probationary contract of the following individual at the conclusion of the contract period under policy DFAB to serve the best interests of the district and issue appropriate notice to the affected employee." T. Greenman Keys Elementary School, grades 1 through 5 teacher.
Just a quick question. Does that mean that we're not going to have a Keys Elementary? Or do we have another teacher that is going to serve in that capacity?
That's correct. We will not have a Keys Elementary. We've discussed this with our elementary principals, and we'll be handling those disciplinary cases at the campuses. There's very little participation, thankfully. There was maybe one or two students throughout the year, so...
Thank you for clarifying that. I actually like that, so thank you.
We're still pending approval and adoption of the motion.
I adopt.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Garadella, seconded by Mrs. Nahada. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Item passes.
Thank you. The next area is the secondary staffing formula changes. Class size change for middle schools from 24 to 1 ratio to 26 to 1 ratio. I'm going to ask the board to adopt and approve the following motion. "I move to approve the recommendation of the superintendent and administration to terminate the probationary contracts of the following individuals at the conclusion of the contract periods under policy DFAB to serve the best interests of the district, and issue appropriate notices to the affected employees." Those affected employees are the following. B. Cardiel, Salvador H. Sanchez Middle School Intervention Lab Math teacher. J. Sepeda, William D. Slider, Middle School Choir Music teacher. C. Cuevas, Puentez Middle School English Language Arts ESL teacher. M. Garza, Socorro Middle School, 6th grade Science teacher. H. Orozco, Sanchez Middle School Physical Education teacher. L. Rodriguez, Sunridge Middle School Science teacher. A. Vasquez, Sunridge Middle School Avid teacher. K. Vicencio, Motwood Middle School Health Physical Education teacher. Have a board member approve and adopt the motion, please.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Mrs. Nahada, seconded by Ms. Garadella. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Item passes.
The next item is the secondary staffing and formula changes, high school and middle school positions that were previously staffed above the staffing formula. Again, I'm going to ask the board to adopt and approve the following motion. "I move to approve the recommendation of the superintendent and administration to terminate the probationary contracts of the following individuals at the conclusion of the contract period under policy DFAB to serve the best interests of the district, and issue appropriate notices to the affected employees." The affected employees in this area are J. Bernall, Eldorado High School Math teacher; E. Dominguez, Eldorado High School Spanish LOTE teacher; A. Rosa, Options High School, CTE Family Consumer Science teacher. If I could have a board member adopt and approve that motion, please.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Mrs. Nahada, seconded by Ms. Garadella. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. We have one final request for approval for two additional teachers. These are probationary contract teachers that the administration is recommending also be terminated at the end of the contract term. I'm going to again ask the board to adopt and approve the following motion. "I move to approve the recommendation of the superintendent and administration to terminate the probationary contracts of the following individuals at the conclusion of the contract period under policy DFAB to serve the best interests of the district, and issue appropriate notices to the affected employees." Those two affected employees are M. Melendez, Eastlake High School Special Education teacher; S. Lopez, Socorro Middle School Social Studies teacher. Could I have a board member adopt and approve the motion, please?
Motion to adopt.
I have a question. Sorry.
One moment. I have a motion on the table.
Second.
A motion made by Mrs. Nahada, seconded by Ms. Garadella. Discussion? Ms. Macias?
Yes, thank you. I know that it was mentioned 43, and this would make it 45. So this is in the best interest of the district, so therefore, this is not due to any of the requirements that we, that were initially approved, correct?
Correct. These two additional items are not within the affected employment area. These are regular probationary contract recommendation terminations for performance and other issues that the administration has recommended that these two contracts be ended for separate reasons, not as part of the RIF.
Thank you for the clarification. Motion? Oh, sorry.
Motion made by Mrs. Nahada.
Yes.
Seconded by Ms. Garadella. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The item passes. There be no further, now there be no further business before this board. We adjourn at 6:58.